Welcome to another episode of The Caption Life, a podcast about how comics and pop culture impact life and society and vice versa, coming to you from my own personal library, deep in the heart of Texas. I'm Kevin.
And from Indianapolis, I am Sean. Before we get started with this episode, please hit that subscribe button on whatever podcast platform you're listening to us on, and follow us on social media under the username at CaptionLife. And you can also find out more information and past episodes at thecaptionlife.com.
So there's been some recent controversy regarding the banning of books in school libraries, most notably the graphic novel Mouse by Art Spiegelman. And we felt like there was an important conversation to be had on this topic. So we decided to push the episode that we intended to release here on February 1st in favor of something more timely and more meaningful. So we reached out to a few people to see if they would be interested in joining us for this discussion. And we are happy to say that even though it was last minute, and we've had some technical difficulties, we are glad to welcome Jill Gerber and Betsy Gomez to the show. Thank you, ladies both for joining us tonight.
Thank you for inviting me. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Very excited to be here.
Jill Gerber is an award-winning K through 12 educator of 20 years and a longtime advocate of graphic literature in the curriculum to reach all learners. In addition to presenting workshops on integration of comics in the classroom, she co-writes about innovative viewpoints on comics and Kid Lit in Education on the blog Perceptive Gaze. She teaches at Rowland Hall, sorry, she teaches at Rowland Hall in Salt Lake City, Utah, and she is now a two-time guest on the show. It was our first guest on the show, if my memory serves me correctly.
That is correct, yes.
And Betsy is the banned books weeks banned books week coalition coordinator and former editorial director for the Comic Book Legal Defense Fund, a nonprofit organization dedicated to the defending of First Amendment rights of comics community. Gomez manages resources, programming, and editorial content for bannedbooksweek.org and advises the CBLDF on educational and free expression matters. Gomez is the editor of the CBLDF's book about the women who changed for expression in comics, CBLDF Presents She Changed Comics. With an extensive background in educational publishing, Gomez has worked as a content developer and editor for several companies, including, is it Howton Mif- Mifton?
Oh, Mifflin.
Howton Mifflin. Okay, so including Howton Mifflin Harcourt and Pearson Education, among others, Gomez's work combines her love of comics with her passion for education and the right to read. So I don't think we could have two better guests to be able to discuss this.
Definitely. So we always like to ask our guests about their personal origin story, and we want to ask both of you, can you share with us what got you into comics? And Jill, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Um, I came to comics. Well, I read them a lot when I was younger, but I kind of came into comics as an educator when my husband started doing intellectual property and representing comic book artists. And he brought home a copy of Terry Moore's Strangers in Paradise. And that kind of, that comic got me hooked. And I've been using, not that one, but using comics in my classroom ever since, because I recognize one, that visual literacy is extremely important, particularly in today's age, and how vast the media is in terms of different kinds of genres. And so it really can meet the needs for all readers.
And Betsy, what about you?
So I actually, compared to, I think, most comic book people I came to, it kind of late, I was in college before I started reading comics regularly. You know, I grew up on a tiny farm in Illinois until I was 14. And, you know, for the longest time, I thought I didn't read comics as a kid because my mom didn't think they were literature. She was an English major in college, and she read a lot. And I should have known better because she's also the same person who introduced me to sci-fi. And when I went to college, I joined a sci-fi club that happened to be stuffed with comic book fans. And so my friends in the club were just like, you know, you should read Sandman, you should read The Crow, you should read Strangers in Paradise. And so I started reading comics. I kind of hid it from my parents for a while. I was worried they're gonna be like, what are you reading this garbage for? I finally came out to them. You know, I'm sure they thought I was spending all my money on booze. And I finally came out to them. It's like, Mom, Dad, I'm reading comics. And my mom was like, oh, that's great. I love comics. And so it was just kind of downhill from there, or maybe uphill, you know, hills were involved. And I just kind of kept going with it and kept reading them. And, you know, when I finished college, I ended up working in educational publishing, and particularly in middle school science. And all the time I was like, we should do some comic books for this stuff, you guys. But I guess I was ahead of my time. I couldn't convince them that comics are a valid tool. And at some point in time, I started volunteering for the Comic Book Legal Defense Fund. And, you know, over the years, CBLDF eventually started paying me to work on their website. And I became editorial director. And I actually recently took on the position of coalition director. So now I work with a lot of our intellectual freedom partners to help defend comics and their challenges in schools and libraries. And so it's been kind of a roundabout way to end up working in comics. You know, the realization a few years back is like, oh, wait, I actually work in comics now. So that's kind of my story in a very quick nutshell.
Well, before we dive into the discussion about banned books, can you share with us and our audience what exactly the Comic Book Legal Defense Fund is and what they do?
Sure. So Comic Book Legal Defense Fund is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the First Amendment rights of the comics community. It was founded in 1986 by Dennis Kitchen when a retailer was arrested for selling comics that authorities in his community decided were obscene. And over the years, we've defended a lot of retailers from obscenity lawsuits and from being arrested. And the mission has transitioned from just defending retailers to more comprehensive work in schools and libraries and defending comics there and helping people understand the importance of comics as educational materials and as a valid form of literature. A lot of our work now is actually defending comics, a lot of LGBTQ plus content that's challenged in schools and libraries, a lot of comics by diverse creators are being challenged. And we also work with partners like the Media Coalition to fight legislation that would limit the use of comics in classrooms. Now, this doesn't mean we've stopped working with retailers. We still work with retailers. In fact, we've talked with retailers a lot lately about what's happening and how it might impact them. Some of the laws we fight would in fact affect booksellers as well. And so we're doing a lot of work to make sure people can still access the books in libraries and schools that can still buy the books online and at comic book stores. And we've been really busy with this the last several months.
Thank you. Now, Jill, as we mentioned, you are an educator, but you also have some strong ties with teaching with comics as well. Can you tell us a little bit more about your background and the experience with this?
Um, sure. With regard to book banning, I've struggled at times to bring in books as part of my curriculum. I also worked with Lion Forge Comics as their Director of Education and Outreach. So trying to create curriculum materials to bring into the classroom to improve and grow comics in the classroom. But I've, most recently, and I've always dealt with like parent questions about some of the materials, not just comics, but also prose work. Most recently, wasn't so much directed towards what I was teaching, but books I have access to, or kids have access to in my classroom library. So, for example, Flamer was one that was most recently brought to my attention by a well-meaning parent. But I start off every year with my independent reading, telling parents, look, I don't censor books. If you have books that you don't want your child to read, that's okay. Just send the book back. There's plenty of other choices, but that I will not remove books from my shelf, which has been interesting. I've had more questions since moving to Utah than I did when I lived in St. Louis.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and talk about the controversy that kind of, I guess, you know, before we got started, Betsy, you said it's been going on for a while. It's just now it's to the forefront of the public conscious because it's a book that's well-known and highly regarded. But what we're talking about is the McMinn County School Board removed Mouse, the graphic novel Mouse, from their eighth grade curriculum. And what was one of the things of the story that you thought was surprising, interesting, or stuck out to you? Like, why now?
So I want to be real. I wasn't surprised about this story, in part because we've been tracking challenges and bans along these lines for months now. Now, Mouse is by far the most high-profile book that we've seen get removed from classrooms. You know, it won the Pulitzer. Everybody knows what it is. Even people who don't read comics have some idea of what Mouse is. And so, you know, I really wasn't surprised when we found out about this. I knew it was only a matter of time before a book as well-known and as award-winning as Mouse was going to end up on this list of banned material. You know, in reading the notes from the meeting in which they made the decision, I also wasn't surprised to find out that no formal challenge had been filed against the book. The school has a materials reconsideration policy. It's actually not a terrible policy. It's a pretty good policy. But one of the things that they don't specify in the policy that's concerning is they don't say that, they say that the reviewers have to read the entire work, but they don't say that they have to consider the work as a whole, which, in which, you know, you might find one part of the book objectionable, but if the entire book is still valid, it's literature and as instructional material, it should be kept. So totally really not surprised it was banned. Not surprised they violated their own school policies to remove it. I was a little bit surprised that the reason it was banned was rough language. And in particular, can I use some rough language in this podcast?
Sure.
Um, the word damn was cited in the, in the, in the meeting specifically. And the meetings are, meeting notes are available online for anybody who wants to kind of read this. And it's a, it's a pretty, you know, it's a textbook example of a group of people making a decision about the content based on small bits of it they find objectionable and not on the entire work itself. And it's really concerning that they're invalidating such a valuable work about the Holocaust because they don't like a few words and a few images in it. And they talk about finding a replacement text. I can't think of a text that would present the topic in such a comprehensive and accessible way.
But don't you think that's part of the- And the part of the reason why, though, like, when you look at some of the alternatives, a lot of people bring up Boy in the Striped Pajamas as an alternative. And that one, well, one, it's from a German boy's point of view, but it sanitizes the Holocaust. And I think that that's part of this as well, is they don't want kids to have a realistic interpretation of the Holocaust.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's absolutely concerning because if we continue to kind of like follow this urge to sanitize the content kids encounter in school, they're not going to be prepared for life. They're not going to understand just how dreadful and how awful the Holocaust or similar situations were. And, you know, at the same time, they're targeting this book for rough language, but they're also using Mark Twain and other books in the curriculum that have every bit is rough language. They just don't have pictures. And so I think that's also a factor in this. And this is something we've seen in a couple other cases where the fact that comics have images have devalued the work in the eyes of the people making these decisions.
Because it's specifically a graphic novel and not like prose that has to be read?
Yeah. There's still, there's still people who look at this and see these pictures and say, this isn't as important as a prose book. When I, I would say the Mouse is arguably more important than the Boy in the Striped Pajamas because it is so honest about what happens. And even then, it could have gone into so much worse detail. But it's got, it's got a balance of, you know, they talked in the meeting notes about this rough language being for shock effect. And it's like, the Holocaust itself is a lot more shocking than this rough language you're complaining about. And so this is a way for students to access this in a way that isn't going to completely alienate them. And in the context of an education, most setting in the context of a classroom, a teacher can provide information to them and, and, and provide more information to help them understand just how profoundly awful this situation was without, you know, in a way that helps them understand it without damaging them, for lack of a better term.
Yeah. I think that's the benefit of graphic memoirs, is that the kids can empathize with the characters, can understand that vantage point. I think that's part of the power of the medium, which I also, I mean, I think that that goes back to, I think some of it is parents not wanting their kids to truly understand this and put them in these little bubbles that isn't realistic.
Jason Reynolds, I just want to make one last point. Jason Reynolds is a YA author who's been banned repeatedly. And he was the honorary chair for Banned Books Week last year. And he made a really good point about how sometimes parents are scared of their kids and the questions they might ask. And so when a kid encounters this material that makes them think and reevaluate their worldview, they're going to ask their parents questions. And a lot of parents may not feel prepared to answer those questions. It makes them uncomfortable.
Yeah. I was just going to mention that, I guess, a couple of things is, one, Betsy, you referred to the minutes for the school board meeting. We'll actually have that in our show notes for this episode. I also got to say, when you were talking about, you know, sharing some language, I thought it was going to be a lot worse than damn. So I was surprised by that. But I'll say personally, I have not, I think I've heard of Mouse, but never paid attention to it and have not read it until this happened. So I wanted to read it before this podcast, before the show. And I think for me, one of the things that really stuck out, I think for both of them, is that, one, you know, we're all on the same page and the same thought in terms of how this book really captures a lot of things that we don't see in other books, especially when I was learning about World War II and the, you know, the prime example always had is Anne Frank, right? That was always the, the literature or the example that we had in terms of someone's struggle. But this was really interesting on a number of different levels. And I think what's also interesting when you take into account of this is that when you read the notes to the school board meeting, this is part of the English literature or English and language arts curriculum and not just history. So I think what was really profoundly impactful about this book is that it wasn't just looking at World War II and the Holocaust, but also looking at the various different layers that we saw in this book with the son's own relationship with his parents and learning about through him. And, you know, I'm sure, you know, the school board probably is not behind, you know, social emotional language, just based on some of the things that was said in that meeting. But I think it does add a lot of different layers. I saw, you know, when the school teachers, administrators were talking about that, you know, overlaps a lot that we don't see in a lot of different other books. And, and you're right, Betsy, what's, what's really funny is that in the school minutes, the educator that they have brought in to talk, to be like the expert in that field that teaches at the schools, he did say that there's not another book that can be replaced, and they decided to get rid of it anyways. And the fact that they had already, like, they weren't teaching this book yet. They were planning on sending out a letter to the parents and let them know ahead of time. So was it something that was just going to be kind of put under the table? They were actually going to address this and let parents be prepared about this. And they had already redacted some of the things that parents have said that they were concerned with. And so the fact that even though those things that they brought up were redacted, the school board still decide to get rid of that anyways, you know, because, again, they addressed some of the concerns. I think there was just a really missed opportunity that they could have just allowed the teachers and the students to, you know, learn and teach. And with everything else, it seemed like this went in a very specific direction for a number of different reasons, you know, even though it seemed like the teachers had done everything to address those issues and still keep the book intact. And the fact that they said that, you know, if we got rid of this, we have to redo the entire module. They didn't care. They just got rid of it. So now they're putting more work on the teachers to figure out what to do to teach this unit now. So.
And with all due respect, F that because there's enough work in the teachers, speaking, speaking personally. Hey, if I were there at the meeting-
It's very, I was just going to say, it's very possible they're also going to cost themselves some money because the book was part of a curriculum that was adopted by the state, which often means the state helps in some way pay for the, for the materials, maybe not fully, but, you know, there is an incentive to use state adopted materials because they're going to cost less in the long run. And a new module probably means they're going to have to buy new books, possibly without any support from the state.
Right.
If, if I had been there as an educator and they'd asked me to like defend it before they threw it out, I find, personally find the reasons that they gave for throwing it out almost laughable. Because you mentioned, you mentioned they have to review the whole book, but they, you know, they have to review the whole book, but they don't have to consider the whole in terms of throwing it out. Like throwing out this over a couple of panels where a curse word is being said, it would be like saying that you're not ever allowed to listen to the Beatles because of Yellow Submarine. Okay? Like, one thing doesn't spoil the whole thing. But then the other thing, I compare this, this idea about the language in the book compared to the way that like fanboys nitpick superhero movies, like, you know, you know, in a world full of gods and hulks and super soldiers, like, this is the detail that you can't get behind. And that just, that just seems so absurd. I do not wear a lot of tinfoil hats, but I will say this, and I'll say it publicly on our podcast, and I don't care if it costs us listeners, I 100% believe that there is a group within our country that believes that withholding educational things like this, like specifically books, because books are the old guard. They're the, they're the gateway to knowledge. But there's a group of people that believes in, in like dumbing down our electorate by, 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 sorry, by blocking exposure to things that could help influence and change their, their mindset about things, or anything that's in opposition to the things that their parents taught them. They want to restrict access to that because they want to keep people uninformed. And if you can keep people uninformed, you can control the narrative, you can control what they believe, and you're more likely to get a positive, more positive response in your favor at the, at the polling place.
Well, I also think they want to silence voices, you know, beyond Mouse. I mean, one of the most absurd banned books this year for me was New Kid by Jared Kraft. I'm like-
That happened, that happened an hour away from me here in Texas.
I don't understand like how you can possibly, if you've read the book, think that it would, you know, not be appropriate for students. So I think a lot of it is that they're trying to also silence people's experience that they don't want their kids to know, which then, for me, then eliminates, right? Then you're saying to your kids that are in your class that may come from that marginalized group, that they're not valued, right? That they don't exist.
That's one of the key points in, in Mouse. I think it's one of the great, the way that he approached it with the animals, but specifically for the Jewish people during the Holocaust, like the, if it wasn't extinction, at the very least, there was, was an extensive dehumanization. They were, they were explicitly told that they were, they were less than, there's even a line in the book about Hitler saying they, they might be human, or something about their race, about their, they are definitely a race, but they're definitely not human.
Right. And that was the opening of the book, actually. Yeah.
So ridiculous. But that's what, that's what, that's what people are trying to do now. How dare an African American write a book about his experience in this country? Like, we, we don't need that. So that was, that was, what's the word? That was, oh, man, I forgot my vocabulary words. I'm a teacher. Sarcasm. That was sarcasm.
There you go.
Well, you know, I can't, I can't speak to whether or not anybody is trying to organize things to keep the electorate down. But what I can speak to is that there are some organized efforts to ban these materials. We're seeing it at the legislative level. We're seeing it at the local level. In fact, the school board officials are elected positions. And this is a prime example of why we should be paying attention to our local elections because there is an organized effort to get more conservative voices onto school boards. In fact, in Spasylvania, I think that's outside of the DC metro area, there were members of the school board, they're talking about burning books. And, you know, they, they actually have a majority on that school board. And, you know, a lot of the things they're talking about are completely unconstitutional. And, and so we really, you know, as responsible citizens who believe in access to information, we need to pay attention to our local elections. Because we, you know, the McMinn County School Board got caught this time, but they're standing by their decision. They've released a statement saying as much. And, but they got caught two weeks after it happened.
Right.
And often when a book is removed, there's no way to get that overturned. Sometimes it happens because there's enough protests and enough national outrage or local outrage. Local outrage in particular is very helpful. If you're living in a community and you see that a book is being banned or they're trying to ban a book, showing up and speaking on behalf of that book is so much more powerful than, you know, us seeing an article in the New York Times about a book that was banned. You know, it's important that that information is out there, but it's also important for local communities when they're seeing that materials are being removed to take action. Because there are people on the other side who are trying to remove materials. And I also want to be clear that this isn't, this isn't a conservative or liberal thing. People on both sides of the political spectrum are trying to get materials removed, always to protect the children, just for slightly different reasons. And, and what's telling is they're not really involved in the kids' in these conversations. Because most of the time, the kids are like, yeah, leave the book. I want to read it. Or, you know, kids, like, if they're uncomfortable with it, they'll stop reading it and ask for a different assignment. And, and removing it, you're just, you're doing the kids a disservice. Even if the material might make them uncomfortable, in the context of a classroom or a library, they have a way to find more information, to talk to people about what this material is making them think and feel. And removing the material, it just, it does more harm than it does good.
Yeah.
When you put it, when you put it like that, about like you reading the book and it making you feel uncomfortable, maybe that's the root of specifically why Mouse was targeted. Because if it's, if it's up to the parents to make the decision what their kids can read, and there's no way that you can read this book without feeling, you know, a little, I mean, you'd have to be a sociopath for it not to make you a little bit uncomfortable because of the nature of it. And because of the graphic nature of it. Now, me being a longtime comics fan, the, the art in, in Mouse is no way like, like high, like, what's the, it's, it's very cartoony because it's animals. It's not photorealistic, like comic book art or whatever. It's, and it's, the other, the other argument, and I'll make it about, against, against banning it because it's not literature, because it's a comic, is it's a very dialogue-heavy book, right? There's, you could almost, you could almost read it as a script without the pictures and still get to the gist of it, because that's the way that it was written. But it forces parents to make a decision about whether or not they are comfortable talking about this with their kids. And either parents are uninformed about it, or they're uncomfortable themselves talking about it. There's, there's probably a myriad of reasons why they're, they're opposed to this. And, and that's got to be, that's got to be considered. That's got to be left up to the parents. Like, by taking it out of, by taking it out, you've now infringed on the rights of every parent that was ready to have that conversation. You've now infringed on the rights of every parent that was ready to have that conversation. Because, because like Sean, I also read the book this weekend. I've known about it for years and years and years. Um, I've had it on my, my bookshelf, um, here at home. The, the problem, the problem, I've never picked it up to, to do anything more than glance at it was because I know what's in that book. I don't need to go see the Titanic. I know that the boat sinks at the end. Okay. I know what that book's about. I watched Schindler's List when I was in the fifth grade, probably, uh, my, my, my biological father insisted on us watching it. I was probably too young to really process it. I don't need, I don't need to be told the story again, but I, but I was glad that I read it because man, more than, more than the stuff about the Holocaust, it's a book about fathers and sons. And, and how art deals with the state, the mindset that his father is in late in life, due to the trauma that he experienced. And it made me rethink the way that I deal with my parents, because I don't, I'm not even aware of the trauma. That they may not even be aware of the trauma they experienced growing up in a time where they didn't say things like trauma.
Right.
Like it's just, but you've taken, you've now taken it out of my hands. You've banned the book. You've taken it out of my hands to be able to, to allow my son to check that book out. And I, I know for a fact that my son can handle it, but he would not see it the same, that he would not see that book the same way that I saw it. But I would be prepared to have the conversation with him for about what, like about the facts that are, are explicitly portrayed in the book. And that should be left up to me.
Well, and, and that's what it is. It's about choice. Um, and removing the material removes, removes choice. Because you can choose to engage with the material, you can choose not to. And if you're a parent, you can make that decision for your minor children. But when you remove the material or demand the removal of the material, you're, you're taking that choice away from other parents. And from other students, because there are parents who will want it to be available. And, and that's what, you know, intellectual freedom is about, that choice to engage with information. And keeping it available so that people who want access to that information can do so.
Yeah. And, and I'll go a step further that, that if you, if you're, if you're trying to ban books because of what your, your child might be exposed to, or what children might be exposed to. But your, but your preteen has a cell phone. Or has access to social media or specifically things like YouTube and TikTok. There, there is a, there is a whole world of, um, alternate facts and, and, and alternate lifestyles and. And, and, and for what it's worth, the truth is out there for them to be able to find. And, um, I, I teach this as part of my curriculum. I teach a 21st century course. Half of what I want to understand is how resourceful can you be? Because if you don't know the answer, you know, one of the skills you need to know in 2022 is can you find the answer? And if you're, if you just, if you, if you've got a, uh, an elephant in the room and you throw a sheet over the elephant and pretend like it's not there anymore. It's, you know, it's still pretty obvious that it's there. You've just, you've just covered it up. You just made everybody more inquisitive about what's under that sheet.
Right. Now, Kevin, I'm glad.
Who's a member of the. Oh, I was just gonna say one really quick point. Jean Yang, who's a member of the CBLDF board, made a really good point during banned book speak last year. That when you remove material, you remove nuance. Cause kids are going to turn to the internet and they're not going to get reliable information. Um, you know, they tend to be pretty sophisticated identifying, um. Uh, identifying, you know, the, uh, sus content, but, um, but at the same time, there's so much out there that you have to weed through. That you're not going to get to the reliable information very quickly, or, um, you're going to run into so much misinformation before you get to it. That, that there's just, there's no nuance there. There's no instruction or support.
And there's no dialogue. I mean, that's the beauty of teaching books in school. Is you have that community dialogue and interpretation and context. I worry about, you know, with the one, I worry about teachers quitting because it's becoming dangerous to be a teacher. I worry about, um, you know, there's a big surge right now. Go out and buy banned books, which is great. But what happens when kids don't have, uh, the, the, the access, right? And it will never, even if the, the parents, you know, could buy it, won't buy it. And then what happens to that well-rounded global education? That in order to make good citizens, right? That's the whole premise behind a public education, right? Is to create good citizens, good voting citizens. What happens to the folks who can't afford, right, to go buy these books for themselves? And how limiting is that? You know, and I, I worry about the kids of color. Yeah.
Well, and that's the reason, that's the reason.
Yeah, there's an argument we see sometimes. Oh.
No, it's okay. That's the reason, that's the reason why I said, what I said about people wanting to like, um. Keep an unintellectual electorate, like it's a, it's a, it's a target, it's a, oh, sorry. This is a targeted attack because it's libraries on, um, low income and minority families that depend on, um, free access to, to literature. For their, their, their consumption. Like, like you said, like some parents could afford to be able to go out and, and buy that, but there are families that, that can't. And, and by doing so, by blocking things, you, you are, you're, you're prohibiting a speci- a very specific group of people from, from accessing them.
Yeah. So that I want to.
I think it's a socioeconomic issue there, um, as well, not just based on race. But, uh, you know, especially if you look at McMinn County, it's in Appalachia. Um, and so this is a school district, I think it's, it's the population of the county is 53,000. And I grew up in a rural school and I got lucky because I had a librarian who would do interlibrary loan for me. But those, those have fallen by the wayside because the cost involved. And so what you have is probably a bunch of kids who don't have free access to information. They may not have the internet when they get home. And so, you know, they're going to be harmed by the removal, uh, in particular. And I think we're seeing, there's probably a lot of removals happening in rural communities that we're just not seeing because there's nobody there to report on it.
So I definitely think there's weed happening. For sure.
All right. Go Sean. It's your turn. Jump in. You've been trying for a while.
Yeah, I have. That's all right. Um. So going back to Kevin's comment about how students have the access of the internet through their smartphone, things like that. And how they can look up a lot worse things online. It does bring me back to what was said in the school board meeting. And let me preface this by saying that. When I read the meeting minutes, it was clear that some of the board members had an axe to grind and that their ultimate goal was to get rid of the book. Even though there's a lot of reasonable attempts to make it appropriate for, uh, eighth graders and even talk about, you know, what else they could do to keep the book in place. They're clearly wanting to get rid of it completely. And I, and I do think there are some board members who are probably trying to balance. You know, not interfering with that, but also responding to parents' concerns. And one of the things that this particular school member had said, and again, I'll, I'll preface this by saying that. I don't put a whole lot of stock in what he did say, because the more you read what he said later on, I think he even allured to the fact that. You know, if I wanted to indoctrinate students, like this is how I'd do it. So it makes me think that he's kind of buying into a deep state type of thing happening. But, um, I think he did make an interesting point by saying that he knows that students have access to things that were probably worse and, and inappropriate. You know, and, and have those access to those things. And he understands that and he gets that. But his concern or his thought process is that, is that the type of thing that should be in a school system when you view it like that? So I guess the question I want to throw out to everybody here is that for parents who have those concerns about it being appropriate or not, like are those actual reasonable concerns? When you frame it in terms of even though they have access to things that are a lot worse, is that still, you know, okay if, because it's a school setting in that regard?
I think it goes back to what Betsy said before, like, but they're not concerned about Huck Finn or, uh, To Kill a Mockingbird, which is a pretty standardized book, right? That has the N word in it. I mean, right? So there's a lot of books that are already in the curriculum, considered canon. You know, Romeo and Juliet, underage kids having sex, right? But they're not banning those books.
Yeah, I think there's, there's, there's definitely, um, the perception of comics is lesser literature, um, or not literature at all. And I think also, um, you know, I just want to make it clear, like parents have every right to raise their concerns. They have every right to go to a school board meeting and raise their concerns. Uh, what we have in this case though, is not a parent going to the meeting, but the school board itself, uh, kind of preemptively taking action. There was no formal complaint, uh, against the book. And we've seen several occasions where school boards are disregarding their own materials review policies and just removing the materials. I, and so that's really concerning because these are people who are supposed to be responsible for the education of the children in the district. They're, they're supposed to be making sure the teachers have the tools they need. They're supposed to be trusting their teachers to do this. And it's interesting that, uh, you know, the indoctrination idea, that's actually, um, a lot of that language is used, um, in, uh, the divisive concepts. Legislation we're seeing where it's couched as indoctrination. And these are the laws that are specifically targeting, uh, quote unquote, critical race theory. Critical race theory is not caught, taught K through 12, but there's, it's been, it's become a boogeyman for, um, it's become like this political football. And so, um, the language of indoctrination and divisive con- uh, concepts is very much a part of that. And, um, you know, it remains to be seen what happens, uh, in the long run. Some of these laws are being challenged. And the ACLU is challenged in the law in Oklahoma. Um, the Texas law is very concerning. It's, it's led to several bans. It's part of, it's part of what contributed to the situation with Jerry Craft and New Kids. And so, you know, parents have every right to voice their concerns, but they also, you know. One of the things that, that school boards and schools can do is make sure you have policies and follow them and stand by those policies when it comes up. Don't void your own policies just because you personally don't like the material, which is a lot of the conversation in that meeting was because they didn't personally like the material. They thought, saw it as less than, because it was comics. And, you know, in libraries and school libraries in particular, um, legal precedent says you can't remove material simply because you don't like it. But with, uh, school curricula, it gets a little more, um, vague because, uh, the Supreme Court has held that school boards have the right to make decisions about what is taught in the school. But what we're seeing is the school boards aren't really, uh, you know, despite policies that say they uphold intellectual freedom, a lot of them aren't upholding it. Which is part of the reason we need to be paying attention to who's getting elected.
Right.
And, and so, yeah, parents absolutely have every right to exercise, um, their first amendment. Uh, obligation to voice their concerns about what's being taught in schools, but they also need to, you know, do it in a way that isn't disruptive. We're seeing a lot of disruption now. Uh, I mean, Chicago meeting several months back, the Proud Boys showed up and called some 14 year old kid a pedophile. Because he showed up to defend gender queer. And so, you know, we're seeing a lot of disruption and a lot of threats and it's not a conversation and we need to get it back to that conversation. And try to find some way to, to help people understand that when you ask to ban one book, what about the book that you personally like? What's to keep the other side from coming after it? And so, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's pretty terrifying. The teachers are scared. People are quitting school boards because they don't feel safe. And, um, we really, you know, uh, it, we get pretty irrational when it comes to our kids, uh, as parents. And, uh, we need to kind of bring that in.
Right. Yeah.
There's the, there's a time and place for like feeling protective of your, of your, of your children, but you, you, you have also got to skirt that line or you can't protect them from everything. And, and just like germs when they're little, you gotta expose them a little bit so that you can, you can make them tougher. Like Jill said, you gotta prepare them for the world that. They're going to go into where the Holocaust really did exist.
And welcome a teaching opportunity.
Yeah. And also let them see themselves in the books.
Yes.
Like it's so powerful and the books that are being challenged are books that speak to underrepresented populations. And Jill mentioned this earlier. It's like, when we ban those books, we're banning that identity. We're making that kid feel like they're lesser than.
Yeah. Uh, and, and I'll say, I think what's really powerful about this book, which is why I think is. Is a really interesting book is that it, it just, it does a lot more than just what they're looking at. And part of me wonders if they've act, if the, excuse me, if the school board actually read the book before they had that meeting, or they just looked at the controversial parts. And my guess would be the latter because the one school board member had mentioned that he thought the ending of the book was completely unnecessary. And I think that was just a small way to look at it. And again, this was a book for an English, an English language arts, uh, curriculum and not a history by itself curriculum. And so I don't think you could really argue that it has nothing to do with, uh, some of this, but, uh, or that it has, you know, anything to do with the Holocaust or anything like that. But when you look at it from that frame and what happened at the end of that book, I don't want to give away if nobody's really seen it, but I think it's important to talk about is that. Basically the son got really upset because he found out that the father actually got rid of his mother's diaries that had her story of what happened. And on surface, you would think like, you know, if that's all you saw, if you just saw the last two pages of the book, it does seem like it came out of left field. But if you were reading it the whole time, you saw that he had a mental health issue that he was dealing with. He felt guilty and blamed himself for his mother committing suicide. And you saw that very vividly in like two pages in the middle of the book. And that was his way of kind of showing how he was struggling with what happened. He took it out on his own father. And I think that was just something that, again, it just, it's an example of how they were looking at very, very specific things. It's just like what you said, Betsy, like it was very clear that they had said, there's a process to get this revoked and everything like that. They just kind of sidestepped that and just voted to get rid of it. And they had a lot of things in place, like I mentioned already, to address those concerns. And it seemed like that wasn't enough for them. Even though it pretty much, you know, covered what they brought up and everything. So, yeah.
And I think.
One of the other things they talked, go ahead Jill.
Oh, I said, uh, one of, as an English teacher, one of the things I like about memoirs in particular is it humanizes these historical events. And they're extremely important for the kids to understand the long-term impact. So when you take out that piece, right? There, it just becomes a series of dates and times and people, right? It's not a human experience. And the one thing I like about Mouse is that, um, as opposed to like Diary of Anne Frank, it shows the long-term impact, right? And, you know, Anne Frank is much more of, you know, this, this really unique, neat, um, young woman, but it doesn't really play into like what happened afterwards. Um, and I think that it's important for the kids to understand the human impact of these historical events. Because we're experiencing these kind of events now. I think about the kids I'm teaching weren't alive during September 11th. They have no context, right? Their parents can, um, share if possible, but it's, it's books. It's the stories that, um. That they're starting to kind of understand why, you know, adults had such a visceral response to the attack on the Capitol. And so I think that's extremely important. And I would also argue that I wonder how many of the board members actually know how to read a comic.
Yeah, that was gonna be, that was gonna be my comment was that they probably looked at it and said, I don't get it. And, and just dismissed it. Um, because I think that that's what a lot of, that's how a lot of people feel, uh, about, about comics. That, oh, this isn't for me, but. That's, that's a very frustrating outlook. Like if it's just not because it's, I wish that the, the world, the way that Twitter comments especially existed. Was that instead of like attacking something, hey, this isn't my favorite thing. And then you just move on. Instead of having to like go and hone in on every negative thing or everything that you disagree with, you just want to erase it from existence.
Right.
Yeah. Or exchange it in a way that, that voids the artistic integrity of the work, because that's one of the things they talked about is redacting more of the book. And that in itself is concerning because you're changing, you know, within reason. And you saw in the notes from the meeting, they talked about fair use. But, you know, some changes can be, you know. Based on that idea, some changes can be made to, to, with, as long as they don't cause a substantial change to the work. But, you know, arguably any change, um, changes the work, uh, whiting out the word damn. But, you know, arguably any change, um, changes the work. Uh, whiting out the word damn changes the work. Uh, and it doesn't really hide the fact that the word's there. You know, the, these are eighth graders. They're not, they might be hormonal, but they're not dumb. And, and so they talked about redacting more of the book, but your change in the art as it was originally made. It's like, you know, putting Post-its over, um, you know, Michelangelo's nudes or, you know, you're not really hiding what's there. You're ruining the experience of the entire piece of art. Um, and so, and, and that's a concern as well. This, this making work more palatable. Like a few years back, somebody talked about cleaning up Mark Twain and taking all the N words out and changing it to slave. And it's like, you're actually like, you're, you're completely changing the work by doing that. And, and it doesn't actually make the work better. And in fact, it, it takes away a lot of the context that Twain was using.
Right.
So.
I feel like, I feel like the McMinn County School Board, like probably, like somebody would probably have the idea like, I like the book. Um, but can we go in and change all the eyes of the cats to the Puss in Boots eyes? Just to make the cats a little bit more sympathetic, um, because I think there are a lot of good cats in the story that they're not getting their fair due. Like I, I know that, I know that they're, that that's like, I mean, not exactly that, but the, that the rationale behind that um, exists for some people.
Right. Now, we, we did get somebody, um, who's watching us right now, asked if we could clarify the analogy to germs that was made earlier. Can we, can we address that real quick? I can't remember who, who made that analogy to germs. Was it, was it you, Betsy, or was it Jill?
I don't remember the context. To germs.
I can't remember. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll move on. That's okay. Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll move on. And, and, uh, and if it, if we're reminded of it, then we'll bring it back up. Yeah. Okay.
So, the, the next question that we had prepared was,
Oh, I know what it was. When you were talking about, um, exposing kids
Oh, yeah.
To germs in order to strengthen their immune system.
Yeah, like if you want to, it's the same thing. I'm sorry. I'll clarify that. Um, exposing kids to, to different, um, forms of literature, different points of view in literature, like in order to get a well-rounded education, you, you need to, um, you need to read a lot of different things. And I think graphic novels are a great, a great way to do that. But it's just like, it's just like when kids are little, um, you, you put a child in daycare, you're, if you're worried that they're going to be exposed to something in daycare, uh, the truth of the matter is, is the more that they're exposed to, like at a young age, the stronger their immune system will be, um, coming out of it. So if you expose kids to the realities of the world in a way that they can um, manage and have a conversation about i- in adolescence, when they're, when they're going through this, you know, eighth grade, this use eighth grade for, because that's the, that's where the controversy lies. But if you can, if you can expose them to, um, the realities of the world and have a conversations about these things and, and, and look at it through a lens of different perspectives, you're gonna have a, a more, um, well-rounded adult that's better prepared to be a functioning member of society.
Yeah. And I think that's the piece that's missing in this, um, board's discussion as well is the lack of trust in the faculty to create a safe space for these conversations, right? Um, and to provide the context for the narrative in the memoir. Um, and, and I think that that's, you know, again, it goes into like the, just the attack on teachers. Um, you know, I, the, they don't trust teachers, right? To, to do our jobs, right? And to think about the developmental stage of the kids and what the kids can and cannot handle. Um, and creating that learning space, that's safe for kids to have those conversations. Yeah, they're just looking at, you know, the language or, you know, one little piece, not the context of it in a classroom.
So that actually goes into the next question that we had prepared, which was as educators and as lovers of comics, what impact do you think that this will have on the future for students and teachers and parents? And, and we've touched on it, uh, on school boards. You, we've mentioned people, people, you know, resigning from school boards because they, they felt unsafe. Uh, but where do you think, where do you think this goes for, for especially our kids and our teachers?
Well, for, go ahead, Betsy.
I guess, oh no, go ahead Jill. I've been talking too much anyway.
No, well, I think you actually have a more national, um, I could talk on a personal level, but I think you have a much better national perspective.
Yeah. Well, I can, um, so just kind of a, a picture of what's happening right now. Cause a mouse is like, uh, you know, I hesitate to say the tip of the iceberg because this iceberg is so massive. Uh, you know, it's an ice shell threatening to break off and, and flood the coast. Um, you know, this time last year, we had maybe a dozen, um, pieces of proposed legislation, bills in various states that targeted content in schools. Uh, this year, we're over a hundred pieces of legislation that are being proposed in, in states all over the country that would limit, uh, instruction related to race, LGBTQ content. It would redefine harmful to minors in the way that teachers and librarians could be prosecuted, arrested, fined and jailed for providing a book to a child. Like say, you know, it's perfectly normal by Robby Harris, which is a sex ed book for kids. You know, a teacher could go to, go to jail for providing that to a student or librarian. And so what we're seeing is a, is a massive movement toward limiting what's available to K through 12 students. And it's going, and, 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 you know, everybody's saying this is to protect the kids, but they're not talking to the kids. They're not engaging with the kids. They're not really understanding that what they find offensive, um, is probably not offensive to the kids. I mean, we've got a long history of adults being scared of what the kids like. Uh, you know, we saw it with comic books in the fifties. We saw it with, with, uh, you know, heavy metal music in the eighties. We saw it with video games in the nineties and even now. And so, um, you know, there's a very kind of, there's an organized, uh, and very terrifying movement towards limiting access to information, uh, for, for K through 12 students. And, um, you know, challenges are on the rise. The, uh, you know, kind of end of September of last year, challenges over the previous year were up 60%. The last three months of the year, they doubled over the previous year. And so it's a, it's a pretty terrifying landscape and we need to, um, and rethink, um, how we go about this and, and, and change tactics and, and come up with ways to help people understand that, um, access to information is important, even information you don't personally agree with.
Yeah, it's a scary time to be a teacher on so many different levels. I do wonder though, like the, the, the optimist in me, um, actually kind of hopes that this might, um, empower teachers to offer more choice and book clubs as opposed to whole class texts in order to make sure that we are honoring all of the students in our classrooms. Um, and, but again, that's budget. It's also based on teacher expertise and we're gonna see, and we're already seeing a massive exodus out of the profession. So, um, here in Utah, you only need a, they just filed legislation where you only need to have a high school diploma to become a sub.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah. Um, so you want scary. I think that's scarier than Mouse.
Here in Texas, you only have to have a heartbeat.
Florida is currently considering a law that's kind of, uh, it's on par with the Texas abortion law that would allow people to sue teachers for providing books that, uh, you know, uh, that they think are critical race theory or harmful to minors. And that's gonna have a chilling effect, not just in terms of like main classroom instruction, but the book club. Uh, I mean, we've seen it in Texas with the Jerry Craft situation where the Texas, uh, um, divisive concept law is so vaguely written. Um, and it's not supposed to apply to libraries, which is the situation in which Jerry was supposed to be participating. But, um, librarians and teachers have a hard time differentiating that. And even state legislators and authorities have a hard time differentiating that. Uh, because the law is, is so broadly written. And so,
Right.
You know, I think we are gonna see some teachers doing what Jill suggests and providing a greater diversity of work, um, for independent book club reading. But I think we're also gonna see some teachers pulling back from doing that because they're worried about their jobs. And worried about going to jail. Um, and so, you know, I think one of the most important things we can do aside from paying attention to our local elections is supporting teachers and librarians. And locally showing up for them when they need our help.
Right. Right. Yeah, I, I know in my own home state, um, Indiana, um, you know, gotten a little hot seat for a little bit because we had, you know, similar legislation where they had like a lot of things that was written in terms of what teachers, you know, can and can't do when students, you know, approach them and want to talk to them about like certain topics and things like that. And I know one of our representatives, um, got in the hot seat because a teacher was testifying talking about how one of the languages was, uh, that you cannot say that a political uh, affiliation or viewpoint is inherently lesser or not like high quality or something like that. I forget what the exact language was, but the instructor made a good point saying that I am not going to sit up here and tell you that fascism and Nazism is something that should be equally valued as, you know, some of the other ones are out there, you know, that's just not the issue. Congressperson was, you know, it just backfired and he just said like, well, you know, we, we should always try to make sure that, you know, we teach objectively or, or, or whatever. And, and I, I think that, you know, it didn't make it out of the House, I think, but I think, or the Senate, but the House has something that is still similar to that. And I know that it's just gonna keep popping up. It's just like what both of you have said so far. It's, it's also trying to make it seem like CRT is a thing and it's not. And even though they don't explicitly say that in there, I mean, it's just all those little things that they're putting in there that could be very concerning. It does make it difficult for not just teachers, but I think for parents as well too. If they have a parent that wants to make sure that their child is okay because they know that they're struggling with sexuality issues or gender issues or things like that. Um, and they're going to school and they can't really talk to anybody about it at school. Like that's eight, nine hours of the day during the week that they're not gonna be able to like have access to talk to somebody if they're struggling with something at the school. You know, they spend the majority of their day in that space and they can't do anything about it. So.
But there are some cases where, where school is the only place those students can talk about it. They can't talk about identity with their parents.
Right.
And, and there are a few laws that, that, um, would require parents being informed about that. And, um, you know, students, anyone under the age of 18 doesn't have, they don't have the same first amendment rights that we do as, as adults, but they do have first amendment rights. They do have a right to access information. They do have a right to protest as long as it doesn't disrupt the, the school process. And, um, you know, we, we, we fail to, to acknowledge those rights and support those rights. Uh, when we don't let them, uh, engage with information.
Right.
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll give my response and I'll tack on to one of the things that Betsy said about, um, Texas's, uh, abortion law. That my, my outlook on all of this is, um, is kind of tied to that. That this is the next frontier of the, of the culture wars. And by constantly bringing attention to things that you disagree with or the things that they feel should be banned, I think gives, um, conservatives or maybe politicians specifically, um, a foothold on something to keep people upset. Like, like this is challenging, this is challenging to our way of life. And the reason why I say it's the next frontier is because I think the, I think the pendulum is swinging so hard on abortion right now, that you have this, you have a law here in Texas that is, um, grossly unconstitutional. You have, um, the Supreme Court trying to figure out whether or not they'll, they'll hear arguments or, you know, for years and years and years. Um, people have said, you know, um, the people have been fighting Roe versus Wade. But, but I've actually heard somebody very, that I, that I trust say it's not in conservatives' best interest to, um, you know, have abortion like federally outlawed because that's part of their platform. If, if they don't have that to keep people upset about, then, then what will they, what will like single ticket or what is it? Um, the single
Single issue ticket. Yeah.
Yeah, single issue voters. They won't have anything to reach out for those people. We already got what you wanted. Now what reason do we have to continue to vote for you? Um, I think this is the next, this is the next battleground. Because if something happens one way or the other, if the Supreme Court finally rules and says beyond a shadow of a doubt constitutionally across the United States of America, we are gonna uphold a woman's right to choose. Um, then, then they've got to move on to the next fight. If, if they get what they want and say across this, you know, we're gonna leave it up to the states and we're gonna allow states to determine whether or not they allow abortions, then, um, then they've won and then they've got to move on to the next fight. And I, I think this is just part of that, is part of that, that system of, of keeping people perpetually angry about something so that you can rally your base and, and, um, like they did here in my town last night where we had a, you know, a, a, a save America rally with 85,000 people in attendance. Um, and for the most part, it's, it's just the most, they just, they all tend to harp on the most sensationalized like topics, the most sensationalized things and don't really plan on doing anything worthwhile and fixing problems. They, they just want to shine a light on everything so that they can say, we're going to fix it. And that's as political as I've been on this show.
Yeah, um, that's a, that's a really interesting point because, um, I mean, the, they have a right to gather. The first amendment gives them that right. And, um, you know, that's one thing we should acknowledge in all this is that, you know, when we talk about, uh, intellectual freedom and the right to access information, uh, unfortunately that also means misinformation. And, and, um, but the, the proper response isn't necessarily, isn't to make information go away or to make the objectionable material go away. It's like the, the response to art that you don't like is more art. Make the art that you, you know, that you want to see in the world. Uh, write the books you want to see. Um, buy the books you want to see if you're, if you're not a writer or support somebody who can. Um, you know, uh, elevate the voices of those that, uh, are opposing these ideas you don't agree with. Uh, and, um, you know, that's one thing I think we often fail to recognize about each other when we, we, when we look at these political divides, which are unfortunate, is that, you know, we're all in this situation where everything's super chaotic. I mean, the last two years, has anybody felt like they're in control of anything? And often when we feel out of control, we're looking for that one small thing we can control. And that's often, you often see, like when things are kind of chaotic politically and socially, you often see a bump in challenges. Because that's one small thing people think they can control. Um, and, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it's human nature to try to control the things around us. And, and it's just, it's unfortunate that what it's manifesting as is censorship. And so we need to, to think about, you know, as much as we might disagree with, with the people who are trying to censor these books, it's also important to be empathetic about their point of view. Um, and to listen to them and try to understand where they're coming from, not just because it gives us better tools, but because it helps us understand each other. Information goes both ways. And when we converse with the people who try to remove this material in a constructive way, we might help them understand uh, better why this material is valuable.
Right.
Well, I think, and one of the most powerful questions I've, I've discovered when I have a parent who's upset about anything is, you know, to ask them, what are you afraid of? And, and, and that for me is, you know, at the root of the, the book banning is what are you afraid of? I also think it's, it's also important to empower kids, um, to have a voice and to realize that they have power and can be change makers. Um, so, you know, we talk about it all the time, you know, uh, you know, one of the kids who, you know, loves Raina, like, oh, well, you realize that's a banned book. Or, um, I had a student read Breakaway. So I said, oh, that book's been in the news lately because of the kiss. And she's like, what? You know, and getting them to kind of recognize that the literature that they're enjoying isn't always available to everybody else. And, and getting them to say, you know, just think about it, you know, how does that make you feel? You know, um, because that for me is, you know, I'm looking at, you know, how messed up so many of the adults are. I, what gives me hope and keeps me in schools is, you know, the, the kids' voices and the optimism and, um, and realizing that they have particularly middle schoolers. It's one of my things I love about middle schoolers is they have strong opinions. And, and they're just looking for avenues, right? To, to use that power for good. And, and this is one of those topics, you know, is what do you think about that? Do you think that that's fair to you?
Yeah. Well, um,
Yeah, the kids are right.
Yeah. And give them a platform.
Need to trust them.
Yeah.
You know, it's not just trusting teachers and librarians. You have to trust our kids too.
Right. Um, but I, and I want to be cognizant of our, uh, time here as well too, because I know I don't want to keep too many people late since we got a, a late start and everything. But, um, I did want to share, we did get one question from somebody on Instagram that had a question about this. And I don't know if we'll be able to answer this because I think this was more of like a, um, a matter of fact question. But they had asked, you know, how did, um, I think, you know, word, word for word, they said, uh, how did the ban even start? And I didn't get a chance to really clarify what that question meant necessarily. But I think it's, um, I, I don't think it was reported in terms of like how many parents had went to the school board or, or anything. And, and in the meeting minutes, it was very, you know, broad and blanket. They didn't say, you know, how they contacted them or, or who and all that. There was at least one teacher that was there that says she taught ninth grade and that she wouldn't have taught, um, eighth graders this book. But other than that, there was no other mention of anybody else at that meeting that had, um, that showed up to object, to object to that or anything like that. And so, um, it's unclear to me from what I can see, um, what exactly caused it. But I don't know if anybody else had any insights in terms of how that actually got started, how it brought up to their attention and everything like that. Um, at first I thought maybe it was because they had, um, been teaching it, but, you know, as you read through the minutes, they hadn't actually started teaching this yet. So it's not like it was a response to kids bringing these books home and parents finding this out. And so it's kind of curious to see, one, how did that even get started and bring people's attention to it? And how many people actually, you know, brought this to the school board to a point where, you know, was it enough people that actually necessitated concern? Or was it just the, you know, the, um, graphic nature and question that they brought up, which was again, the things that they highlighted were things that we talked about, the, the language that was used. It's a very mild, um, generally speaking for eighth graders and, um, you know, a couple of scenes of like nudity and, and disturbing scenes and stuff like that. So.
Well, suicide, suicide's usually a,
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't think they brought that, I don't, I, if they did bring it up, they brought up one time. So wasn't it like something that was repetitive? It was always the language, uh, that was being used, I felt like was like the biggest thing. But they brought up, I think, one time about that. Yeah.
Well, and I, I'd also add like why now, uh, uh, most curriculum, new curriculum is brought before the board for approval before it is, um, it is put into school. So I'd be curious, like, you know, what's spurred the, the, the controversy now when it had to be approved earlier?
Yeah, the, the reporting I've read and I've little, read a lot of reporting. I think, uh, the initial report, which was on, uh, the Tian Haller, um, which is, uh, I've, I've read that paper before it's, if I recall correctly.
I'm sorry, it's what again? I think you cut out for a second.
Uh, the, the publication names a little liberal for Tennessee, which is to say not very, but,
Oh, right. Gotcha.
But, um, I think they, their reporting was entirely based on these minutes. Although their website crashed for a substantial amount of time because I think everybody was looking at it. And, uh, I, I get the sense that, uh, the, the board took this move on their own. It's quite possible there was a private conversation between a board member and, uh, a parent or teacher in the community, um, that instigated this. But I don't, there were definitely, as far as we can tell, there was no, and it, and they say as much in the meeting, um, minutes, uh, that there was not a formal complaint. It wasn't, nobody filled out the paperwork, uh, to challenge the material. Um, so I suspect it's either unilateral by a member of the board or a member of the board had had a conversation with someone else in the district that, um, led them to examine the work, um, and start this, this conversation. I looked at previous minutes, um, like minutes from previous meetings, granted a few of them were missing and there wasn't mention of the book until the January 10th meeting. So, and, and I mean, sometimes all it is is just a conversation. A lot of these removals we've seen in other cases, it was, you know, a parent showed up at, um, a school board meeting with excerpt, uh, excerpt, like blown up images from gender queer. Um, they filed the, the official, um, challenge paperwork and the board decided to remove the material, um, without going through the process. Uh, and without even reading the book. So, you know, we've seen several instances lately where, um, where school boards and library boards are completely disregarding their materials collection and review policies.
The panels in Mouse are also like really, really small. Do you know how blown up you'd have to make one of those images to, to use the art itself to prove a point? It's ridiculous.
Right.
Well, yeah, and a, and a dot for a nipple.
Right.
Well, and there were more, I mean, my church, you know, the baby Jesus is more anatomically descriptive than the, uh, the nudity in Mouse.
Well, and I like to, I like to point out, uh, in, in some of these challenges, when they're, they're going after a specific thing. And I'm like, I'm like, well, that's in the Bible too, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I think that should be our answer for a lot of things.
Yeah.
Just fight fire with fire.
Yeah, I, I tweeted out something today about how in the, in the book of Psalms, it talks about, uh, bashing babies' heads against the rock. So, yeah, it's a,
Specifically in Mouse as well.
Yeah, yeah. Where the soldier grabs the child and smashes the child against the wall or something like that. Yeah. So I'm like, it's, 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 uh, yeah. But I think it goes back to the conversation about, you know, how much of the medium is impacting this versus, um, the, the content itself, right? Because I think if you read about it, it's like, it's terrible, but then seeing it has a different impact on it, you know? So I think, I think the, the medium definitely plays into this decision here. Even though they didn't really say anything much about the comic, it, it's definitely, that's what they're talking about. So.
Yeah, to describe anomalies.
I think the images are, the images are a major factor. And we've seen that, um, the graphic novel version of The Handmaid's Tale was banned in a school district because they thought that the pictures made it lesser, less valuable than the prose version. Um, and the prose version was kept on shelves, but the comic book was removed. Uh, and so we're seeing several situations where comics are specifically being targeted because of the pictures. Uh, you know, uh, people arguing that just the mere depiction of nudity is pornography or obscenity, uh, which is not the case. But, you know, uh, that's what we run into. And, uh, you know, for some reason cartoon nudity is super offensive.
Yeah, apparently.
Hey, you know, this book's got like tiny mouse wieners in it, right? That's how I feel like that conversation between that anonymous, um, person and the board member went. Before we go, do, do either of you have any final, uh, thoughts on the topic?
No, I'm just grateful. I was gonna say, I'm grateful for Betsy and the rest of the folks doing the work.
Well, I'm grateful for teachers like Jill who are out there and helping lead this fight as well. Um, I think it's so important for all of us to get that out there and support our teachers and our librarians. And, um, you know, for those of you who can throw support to the organizations who are helping fight this stuff, like CBLDF, cbldf.org. You can give, you can donate there, um, you know, other organizations like the National Coalition Against Censorship, PEN America, the American Library Association. We've got a long fight ahead of us and we could use all the support we can get. So I definitely encourage people to donate if they can. If not, help us signal boost. And, um, when you find censorship in your community, let us know about it because we can't do anything if we don't know about it. Uh, CBLDF has a reporting form on their website now, uh, so that you can submit, um, you know, even if it's just a news article uh, from your community, you can submit that to us and we'll look into it.
And we will definitely throw some of those links, get a list from you, Betsy, and throw some of those links on our, uh, show notes for this episode when we put it online. Before, before we let both of you, uh, go, we thank you so much for joining us. Can you tell our audience members where, um, where they can find you online?
Uh, the easiest for me is Twitter, at Gerber Jill.
Uh, so I actually am not on Twitter, but you can follow at Band Books Week and at CBLDF on Twitter. And, uh, I usually have a hand in either of those feeds. Uh, I definitely encourage you to visit cbldf.org, join the mailing list, um, bandbooksweek.org as well. And, um, you know, uh, you can always send emails with leads to info at cbldf.org.
Thank you guys. We want to say, we want to express our extreme gratitude for you joining us the, this evening, uh, with late notice. And, and thank you for helping us overcome the, the technical difficulties. Uh, thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you for sharing, uh, your thoughts on this very, very important topic. But that's going to wrap up another episode of the Caption Life Podcast. We hope that you enjoyed listening. Don't forget to smash that subscribe button on whatever major podcast platform you listen to us on. You can also follow us on Twitter and Instagram, at Caption Life. And if you like what we're doing, give us a shout out or tag us in a post. For more info about us and all of our previous episodes, please visit thecaptionlife.com. Until next time, support your local library.
And your local comic shop.
Yes.